Okay, it's 10:00 AM on Monday, November 23rd, 2020. This is a special meeting of the Iroquois County Board. Clerk call a roll, please.
Alt.
Here.
Bard. Baron.
Here.
Bowman. Bowers.
Here.
Coconhour. Crow.
Present.
Curtis.
Yes.
Dubey. Ducat.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Johnson. Johnson. McGinnis.
Yeah, he's here.
McTaggart. Offal, here. Scher.
Here.
Sticknut.
Here.
Whitlow.
Here.
Young.
Eric Young is here.
And Zoomaw.
Okay, Mr. Offal. We'll meet in a circular prayer.
Father God, we praise and thank you for this morning and what you have given to us. And Lord, as we get ready for Thanksgiving, we most of all want to thank you for your Son, Jesus Christ, who died on the cross for our sins. And Lord, as we get ready to go into the special meeting, help us to vote in the correct manner in which we think of our constituents and just help us, Lord, to make the right decisions. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next the clerk will read the call for the special board meeting.
Subri and Suver, we, the undersigned members of the County Board of Iroquois County, Illinois, do hereby request you to call a special meeting of the County Board of Iroquois County, Illinois, to meet at the administrative center in the city of Watsika, Illinois, on Monday, November 23rd, 2020, at 10:00 AM, for the purpose of discussion and action regarding a media conversion project for the Iroquois County Recorder using Cures grant funding, signed by John Scher, Ernie Curtis, Gerald Whitlow, Barb Offal, Lyle Baron, Dee Hughes, and Sherri Johnson.
Okay. Next, we have in front of you a copy of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve that? Mr. Curtis, seconded by Mr. Whitlow. Are there any questions or comments regarding the agenda? Seeing none, the clerk will call a roll, please.
Baron.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Crow.
Yes.
Curtis.
Yes.
Ducat.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
McGinnis, oh, he's not here.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, he is too. Oh, I'm sorry. Offal.
Yes.
Scher.
Yes.
Sticknut.
Yes.
Whitlow.
Yes.
Young.
Young is yes.
Okay, that motion passed.
Sorry, Alt.
Yes.
Sorry, Jerry.
Are there any public comments this morning? I remind everyone present here, when you're speaking, to speak into the microphone. Make sure the microphone is turned on and speak loudly so that everyone can hear. Thank you. Next, we have a discussion and action regarding the media conversion project for the Iroquois County Recorder using the Cures grant funds. To begin that, I'll ask County Clerk to give us a brief rundown on what this project involves.
Okay, so I sent an email out to all of you that have email regarding the meeting and the need for the urgency. Iroquois County was awarded $443,000, $443,000 from the Cures, in a Cures grant. So this grant can be used for COVID mitigation. And I was contacted by our recording vendor regarding the media conversion of documents from microfilm to digital images. The way this can be described as COVID mitigation is by getting the documents online. So title searchers, bankers, attorneys, or even the general public would be able to access their records online to limit the exposure coming into the office, to keep them from having to fight over an appointment to come into the office. This way, they would be able to do their work at home. What we have right now are documents going back to 1990 that are indexed 96 through present, but the documents going back to 1990 are online to where if you have a document number, you can get a document online. What this media conversion would do would be for 10 years of documents, 1980 to 89, which would allow for 40 years of our documents to be online and to be obtained online. Initially, when I found out about this grant, it was, as I described in my email, completely on the back burner because I was concentrating on the election. Then with the more information that was coming to me and that more reporters were applying for it, I thought, well, maybe we can give it a go. So initially, when the recording vendor reached out, it was going to be for a scan-only media conversion, which is not what you have in front of you. The scan-only media conversion would have allowed for a hard drive to be given to the clerk's office or to the recording office, to where we would be able to have the records digitized for if we were on quarantine and that sort of thing. The counties that were applying for scan-only imaging were getting denied, the use of grant funding. So the recording vendor came up with the second media conversion agreement, which would allow for the documents to be online and searchable, like I said, by recording number. It is considerably a lot of money, $76,728.50, and that is about what we spend on our 10-year conversions. So anyway, that is where we start.
Okay, at this time, does anybody have any questions about this? Yes.
Subri, the records before 1980, how are they, what's the format and what condition are they in?
They're in microfilm, and some of them are not in the greatest of condition. It is something that microfilm conversion is going to be a huge undertaking, and it's going to have to get a lot of attention in the next several years. But right now, it's, the film that I'm, part of this media conversion is in good condition. It's in fine condition. It's just a fact of the ability of working online and remaining out of the office and that sort of thing. That's what the push for this is.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, does anyone else have any questions at this time? Mrs. Crowe?
So we're getting $443,000, and the cost for this 10 years is $76,000?
That's correct.
What are we going to do with the rest of the money?
Well, it's a reimbursable grant, so the county has to front the money first.
Okay.
And so that is one thing Eric was talking in the PMP meeting about, PPE, possibly. But that is totally up in the air. But we were awarded $443,000, but it is a reimbursable grant, so we have to front the money before.
I can add a little bit to that. At the PNP meeting, while we did discuss how we might approach the rest of the money, if we can find ways to utilize it. The grant is set to expire on December 31st, but we can apply for an extension to January 31st. So it was suggested that Jill Johnson would work in contacting other departments to see what other areas there might be available for the use of this money. At the same time, Mr. Stacy is going to work on getting some numbers put together for the PPE stuff that might be, might be able to use it for as well. So we're going to try and put together a plan whereby we can use all the money in the grant, if that's possible, or most of it.
So Eric, can you expand on your PPE for, would that be distribution in the county or here at the Health Department, or what would that be?
For the county, and it's just an idea. It's just an idea of how to use Cure money. The idea sprang off my brain because it's something that I believe would obviously be reimbursable through the Cure grant. To be clear, though, that's not what you're voting on today. That was just something that we discussed in policy and procedure.
I understand, thank you. Is there a need for, are we short PPE in the county?
During the beginning of the pandemic, the state shipped a lot of PPE and other supplies to EMA and Health Department both, and we've been supplying periodically. Emergency responders and healthcare entities throughout Iroquois County were starting to run low on some things, and we're not able to get further shipments from the state unless we show that we tried to purchase some ourselves. Which is why I thought a 100% reimbursable grant would be a good opportunity to do that. With the pandemic worse than it ever has been, it might be a good idea.
Mr. Offal.
Subri, are there people working from home now, and there's still many?
There are not currently any of the individuals in our office working from home. However, we did have a scare on, like, right before the election, one of my employees had to quarantine. Anyway, she would have been able to work at home, however, because we were able to obtain laptops through that grant. However, the work that needed to be done was in person, handing people ballots, registering people to vote, and that sort of thing. So right now, we don't have anyone, but the possibility of a quarantine with the changes in the amount of time that you can be together and that sort of thing, Dean made it clear that if someone in our office did test positive for COVID, that we would have to shut down.
So would these documents be used at different ways or times, even if it doesn't come to that?
Well, the documents, once they're available online, then they would be available to really anyone who has a document number. They would have to end up getting indexed, which does take a lot longer, but just making them available to where someone can obtain the documents online is the key, I guess. And then, once they're indexed, then they'll be searchable online as well.
So what kind of documents are they?
Recording documents, so mortgages, deeds, leases.
Or certificates?
Uh, no. Well, birth certificates and death certificates, marriage licenses, those are all able to be requested online, but we have to have someone actually physically in the office that can print them and send them out, unless it's something that is a birth or death certificate that is available on the IVRS website, then we would be able to print from home and that sort of thing.
One thing I'd like to point out, that the amount of money on this grant is $76,728.50. We're being asked to approve this and to get that money sent to the vendor right away. They've agreed that they're not going to begin work on the project until it's approved by the state. So we're, in a sense, not risking anything, but in order to get the money handled in that way, it's necessary for the board to approve the whole project and the whole method. So that's really what we're here today to do. One of the questions that arises from this, though, is where are we going to find the money to do it? I don't know exactly how the board will want to do this. I could make some recommendations or suggestions, but I think that's something that we need to figure out as a part of this also. We don't, we don't just have an account sitting there right now that we can take this money from. We have money in contingencies and several accounts that we probably can amalgamate together in order to handle it that way. We may also be able to do some type of an inter-fund loan with the revolving loan fund to access the money on a temporary basis. I'm not too sure exactly how we want to go about this, but that is one of the things that we need to decide this morning.
Ms. Johnson would like to ask if we will vote again for the use of other funds that today is just for the approval of the $77,000 for the media conversion.
That is correct. We're hoping to be able to have something on the other use of the other monies in that grant available for discussion and vote at our December 15th board meeting. Mr. Bowers.
After we give him the check, send a check for the $76,000, how long before the Cures money comes in?
I'm not sure as far as the timeline of knowing, or of when the Cures money comes in. I've been told that once the application is submitted, that you know within a week or so if they're going to approve it or deny it.
Do you have, can you, can you portion this out, like, the $76,000, or do you have to have the whole thing put together with all the money you want to spend at one time?
It would all have to be done as far as the agreement and the payment for the services would have to be done by December 30th, because that's the ending period of the grant.
But you can, can you piece me over that?
Well, I guess you could, but they have to get started on, I mean, I guess I don't know what you mean.
Are you meaning you can do hers and then do another one later?
Right.
It's not piecemeal hers then?
Oh.
No, hers you can go in, but then you have to have more layers.
Yeah, you can do, you can do stuff at any given time. You can submit.
Just before, just so it's before December 31st?
Right, there's, there's been counties that have been submitting since August, actually, I believe.
We do have the opportunity to file an extension on that grant to January 31st, which if we find enough things at our December 15th meeting that we want to do, we likely would apply for that extension in order to get the things put together, but that's, that's something we got to decide at the December 15th meeting.
Can you put the expenses of this meeting into one, right?
Into one what?
In a Cures grant.
It will go, it will go towards the money on this grant, yes, okay. But the rest of the grant that is unexpended will still be available to us.
Okay, very good.
Mrs. Crowe?
Is this on? Anyway, I guess I'm not quite clear about what Paul's asking, but my question is sort of piggybacks on it. Undoubtedly, you've got a lot more documents that need to be digitized. So is this a situation where you could include that and it could go on for, say, a year or two years, or it's like, no, it has to, you have to do it now, you know?
This would have to be done now to get these 10 years submitted to be approved for this grant funding to allow for the 40-year search.
I know, but you couldn't request others because we'd have to get further agreements, and you'd have to identify terms of years, like 70 to 79, something, as an example.
Right.
And, and then we'd have to front that money, so.
Right, but the, the issue lies with the media conversion, and it has to relate to COVID, not just media conversion. And so the reason why this is being proposed is so we can have 40 years of documents online, which is a standard 40-year search. Being more aggressive and asking for documents in the 70s, 60s, I think that would definitely be a.
Stretch.
A stretch, and you guys are trying to just get your media converted, where this is for the online to keep searchers from having to come into the office and to allow people to be able to tell a work. It would also allow recording employees to tell a work from home as far as to allow for indexing and that sort of thing as well. But that's why not going back so far. I will say, Kankakee County, their recorder applied, and she was denied. So the possibility of denial is.
Has been.
Is definitely real.
How far back does Kankakee County want to go?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure all of the details of their conversion, but I just know the details of ours.
And I guess you could add, I believe you told me that the people at Fiddler feel pretty confident that what we're asking for is something that will be approved. Is that correct?
Oh, I think they'll say anything to. One thing I do have reservations about that I thought of Friday afternoon, because of the amount of this contract, is something we should have put out for bid. This is where my mind starts turning and why I need more time to process things and work on things. So this is something that, if you guys were going to move to approve this today, I would definitely want in the motion that we ask Joe Devine if it should have gone out for bid, because it's something that did not go out for bid. And I'm not sure as far as other entities, if this would be considered a professional service agreement or not. So it is something that, like I said, I thought of Friday afternoon and wanted to throw out there before we move.
Well, I guess I don't suppose any of us necessarily have that answer to that.
Right.
It is somewhat of an urgent matter, whether it's probably not an emergency, though, so we can't.
Right.
Probably can't use that just to be.
Yes, yes.
But we do have an agreement with Fiddler right now, so this is, this is contracting for work with an existing vendor.
This is true.
Which puts that in a different light also.
Right, and that is where I am unclear, but I just wanted to throw that thought out there because I always try and think about the worst thing that could happen.
Well, I don't see any, anything wrong in a, in a motion being made contingent upon his approval.
Sure.
Mr. Ducat.
How long will the state approve it, that it would actually be done, the general public could actually see it?
That they would have this done?
Yes.
They would begin working on it immediately. I'm not sure the timeframe.
Yeah.
I don't know that they can guarantee that it's going to be done by December 30th or 31st. However, in wording from the US Treasury, which was part of that email that I had sent you guys, the way Fiddler feels about the information that they received was that if the project does not get completed, sorry. From the wording from the US Treasury, it says that "In recognition of the likelihood of supply chain disruptions and increased demand for certain goods and services during the COVID-19 public health emergency, if a recipient enters into a contract requiring delivery of goods or performance services by December 30th, 2020, the failure of a vendor to complete delivery of services by December 30th, 2020 will not affect the ability of the recipient to use payments from the fund to cover the cost of such goods or services if the delay is due to circumstances beyond the recipient's control." So they, they can't give me a guarantee, drop dead date.
I didn't know, I didn't know if Fiddler actually had an estimated time as soon as they were.
I know that, like I said, they were, they would start working on it right away, but I don't know that they can give an exact date of when it would be done.
I just know it was three months, six months, nine months.
Sometimes it takes a little longer, but.
I understand that.
If they are, like, doing it as a, not as a theory, this has to be done ASAP, maybe less time.
Okay, is there any other questions on this matter or any other discussion? How do we want to proceed?
Trying to move that we go forward with it and continue.
Okay. Motion out of the floor to go ahead. Mr. Offal is seconding. I think one thing that we need to identify is where the money's going to come from.
Good idea.
I think that'd be hard for the whole committee to do, I think. You and the finance department might be the best, and if somebody all wants to put input into it, but the money people would try to sit down and go through. You're going to have plenty different options, so.
Mrs. Crowe?
Well, I don't like the idea of going through the revolving loan fund, and I have a question, I think, and I'm not sure that this is legal, but don't we have some money in the farm account? And aren't we talking about actually borrowing and then paying back to a fund, to a line item?
I think we are to some extent. I mean, this is something since, you know, it can be coming out of our 2020 budget if we're going ahead with it today. So it depends on what funds are available in that budget. I know there are some contingency monies available. I think Jill can identify those numbers more specifically as to what amounts they are, but it's probably going to have to come from more than one place, if that's the route we want to take.
So what are your thoughts on that now, if you could share that with us?
Well, we still have $15,000 in finance contingency, and then we have the contingency of the county board. We did use funds out of that contingency line for the bonds, but that has been reimbursed. So there's the $50,000 that is available there as well. I can look into other funds. I was not quite prepared to explain where the funds would come to, as I wasn't quite sure that was on the discussion for today, but contingency definitely can be used. And then, like I said, the other funds that could be a possibility, I'd have to look into further.
Okay, so where does that leave us? Do you think there's enough money in these other contingency funds to cover it?
It, it will cover the majority of it, yes.
We need to cover all of it?
Mm-hmm.
You identified $65,000 in contingency monies. That leaves us about $12,000, $13,000 to find yet.
Exactly.
Can we, can we identify anything looking into the, through the records right now?
I'm taking a look, but again, I would need a little more time.
I'm taking a look, but again, I would need a little more time.
Mr. Hall?
Would it be possible for us to lead that up to the finance committee to find that?
Well, it would be, but the finance committee isn't gonna meet until a couple of weeks from now. This is something, the reason we called a meeting today was to be able to try and move ahead immediately with it. I would suggest that the motion is includes pending approval by Mr. Devine and could also be pending, pending the finance manager finding sufficient funds in other accounts to, to pay for it, given her that authority.
I will accept that in my motion. So, pending the finance manager finding
Mr. Chairman, I think by the time uh, Mr. Devine looks at that, that finance committee will have that figured out.
Uh, we'll be contacting Mr. Devine immediately.
Okay.
And I, this is something we wanna get done today.
Right. So people are gonna do.
I don't anticipate any delay there for that reason. Does anybody else have any questions or whatever about the motion that's being made? What would be voting on?
Well, I say let's take a little time and let her look.
I agree.
We're not maybe her, she's under the hot seat here a little bit, so let's give her some time to look.
I think that's fine, it's nothing she'd like to do.
I know.
Okay, everybody stare at her.
My question is for Brian.
Um, would it be possible, I'm showing uh, as of now,
the automation fund for recorder, would it be possible to, to kick something in from that for now until we get reimbursement through?
Yep.
So that's what I would suggest is perhaps we could utilize um, automation from recorder as well as a contingency to purchase it. And then once the reimbursement is um, given back to us, then we can go ahead and split that reimbursement as it was given.
The only, the only thing we need to understand with that is that we don't know when the reimbursement from the state will come through. So that money could be tied up for a while.
That's true.
But it's always very good with, you know, your part of it is probably you're good with it. I think the part, excuse me, the part on the contingency lines for the county, I don't think would be a problem, so.
Could you recap the contingencies, please, Jill?
Uh, there is currently fifteen thousand in finance uh, line that we have not used, um, as well as the fifty thousand from the county board line. We did use uh, twenty-seven thousand and some change for the phones, but that has been reimbursed through the insurance. So that fifty thousand is still available.
Not much for the recorder?
Well, if we can do, if you're, if you're wanting to do the fifty thousand for the county board line and the fifteen for the finance line, then that would be the remaining balance, um, what was it, ten thousand and some change.
Eleven thousand, seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents. I think if it's slated in November, it's not likely that those contingency funds in the county board line and the finance committee line are gonna be utilized or anything. So I think we're safe to proceed that way. Okay, everybody good with that?
You, you second, you still second with the amendment?
What's the motion again?
Uh, to move to go forward with the contract pending the state's attorney approval and pending the finance manager finding the funds.
Well, why do we need the finance when we just referred it?
Well, that was before, so.
You can mean it on either way.
Do you want me to not have the finance in there, I can take that back out?
Take it out, please, before I second it.
Then you've already seconded the other.
Well, then I second again.
Okay, I guess if there is no further discussion or questions, I'll have the clerk call her off, please.
Barron?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Duca?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Johnson? Johnson?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Aoffel?
Yes.
Scher?
Yes.
Stignot?
Yes.
Whitlow?
Yes.
Young?
Young, yes.
Alt?
Yes. You got everybody? Okay, all right, that motion passed. Is there any old business to come before the board this morning? Is there any new business? We have a motion to adjourn. Mr. Bowers, seconded by Mr. Duca. We'll call her off, please.
Bowers?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Duca?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Uh, Aoffel?
Yes.
Scher?
Yes.
Stignot?
Yes.
Whitlow?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Alt?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Okay, meeting is adjourned. Next meeting of the county board will be on December seventh for the organizational